Okay, let's see. So I think we've got a few more people waiting to join us, so we will give it just a couple of minutes and then we'll get started. Today on our agenda, we want to discuss a timeline for mapping and city-county maintenance partnership. Are two big topics on our agenda today. We'll start in about two minutes. We'll just give everybody an opportunity to hop on the line. Okay, so it's 1:05 and we'll go ahead and get started here. What I'd like to do first is I would like to start by by recognizing our community members that are outside our windows protesting and take this as an opportunity to read to the community or announce to the community members our position on that and I would invite my fellow board members to chime in as necessary. Commissioner Mudge has committed to sign on to this statement, so I'll read that in now. Dear Lake County community, we may not currently have all of the solutions or even yet understand how to ask the right questions, but we do recognize the need for positive action and allyship with our community members of color now more than ever. We also agree that we should leverage our position as elected representatives to help lead the work necessary to dismantle institutional racism where it is ingrained in local, state, and national systems, policies, and beliefs. As leaders for all members of the Lake County community, we commit to using our voices to denounce racially fueled hate and violence against people of color and to amplify efforts to create a more inclusive, more equitable, and safer world for us all, starting right here in Lake County. Both Commissioner Mudge and myself have committed to that statement. Commissioner Glenn, would you like to also commit to that statement at this time?
Yeah, that would be fun.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Glenn. We have also sent that statement to our city representatives in asking for their commitment as well as a unified voice. So thank you, thank you, everybody, for taking the time to let us read that out today and I'll hand that over to our PIO to get that distributed. Yeah.
Can I also make an additional comment?
Yes, absolutely.
I think it's so important to also look at, you know, just the the event that we're in and how easy it is that we all have heightened just the trauma that's kind of heightening all of these things and I want to applaud our community for, you know, maintaining our continued efforts in being inclusive and doing outreach and really trying to move forward with projects, old and new, so that we can just continue to improve the quality of life for us all and every community member that we have here in Lake County. You know, and a part of that, too, I think as we are kind of ebbing and flowing on this roller coaster of the events of our our positions as public servants, you know, we realize that everybody is going through this trauma and I know that we are committed to supporting our employees and, you know, your public servants as Lake County in better mental health support as well because we all need that and we all need to be our best and take care of ourselves so that we can be there for everyone else and meet the expectations of the community. So I just wanted to kind of outline that that we move to make those best efforts and provide that support for city and county staff so that we can, you know, continue putting our best foot forward with our community.
Thank you, Sarah. So with that, we will move into our next item, as long as you don't have anything else, Commissioner Glenn.
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move into talking about our timeline with mapping. So I had a really good productive conversation with Bryce, Paul Clarkson, and Miguel. I don't think Miguel's on here, but Bryce is, about the need and potential timeline for mapping. So Bryce has the capability and the expertise to move into into the mapping position. There's some projects right off the bat that I think he would be really great at getting started at for us. Two of those that I had talked with him about briefly today are identification of county-owned property that we could potentially offload or useful county-owned property in places that we could sell for additional residential development or commercial development. And then identification of public roads. So roads that have been historically utilized as a public road and have become a de facto public road, but maybe recognizing them as a true public road for access to additional private property. So I I think through that conversation, and Paul and Bryce, you can jump in and correct me where I'm wrong if you feel. I think where we landed to bring this to the board is we landed on potentially moving him out from the assessor's office at the end of August, potentially to start this so that we can get our GIS data up and moving and workable at the end of August and then coordinating with the city on what the cost or not the cost, what the projected administrative holdback fee from the URA area might be for staffing in the assessor's office. So there's kind of two pieces there, if you will. And actually, I guess it's really good that you're on this call, Greg, to talk us through that a little bit. If you if you have any information on the the percentage of holdback administrative fee on the URA area.
Well, we've heard some numbers and I think Miguel has a pretty good feel for that in terms of having gone to the classes around the state. But I I don't remember, you know, 2% is in my mind, but that could be a pretty big number as well. So I don't actually know what it would be and we would really need Miguel to let us know what he's learned about that. But he has
I have access to that agreement. I'll pull that up and let you know that exact percentage between the URA and the admin for the B OCC.
Thank you.
That'd be great. So B OCC members, in speaking with Paul and Miguel and Bryce, it sounds like this is a pretty big priority for us, especially with the pictometry piece coming on for us to capture all of that valuation appropriately and accurately. And it sounds to me like the mapping data is something that's utilized countywide by several other entities. So I guess we'd kind of like to know your thoughts on if you feel like this is something that we might potentially be able to make happen at the end of August-ish?
Kayla, can you, I'm sorry, you said the first, I guess, project, if you will, was mapping county land and going through some of that title work that we've also, I mean, we haven't asked without the mapping and identification of the valued or, sorry, a plan to implement with the valuable land or what we deem valuable. That was one. The second was asking the city about backfilling the assessor's office on the, I'm sorry, I lost that, the number two.
Number, the second piece of that is backfilling the assessor's office for moving Bryce out.
Okay, okay. No, I think, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. I I I wonder, am I understanding correctly that that first project, if you will, of kind of going through an exercise perhaps with the planning commission, with land use staff and the board and identifying and looking at all these county properties that we could leverage as incentives or sell for, you know, increasing our revenue. Can we start that project sooner than later or are we also talking about looking at that in August?
Bryce, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So I think especially with the kind of county-owned parcels we're talking about here that I talked to Kayla about today, that's something I can start working on immediately. I was going to work on it this afternoon after we got off this meeting. We already have a pretty good inventory of all county-owned properties and what we're trying to do now is just identify, you know, it's just going to be me going through a spreadsheet and kind of just identifying which of those parcels we have full ownership of and full rights to. And so I think a lot of the properties that the county has right now are fractional ownership and there's a lot of mineral rights only. And so I think just the easiest properties to offload and the best way to start would be looking for those properties that the county has full fee simple interest to. So I think I can start that immediately. I mean, that's not it's not going to be, you know, requiring new data. It's just going to be a reanalysis of data we already have.
Paul, what are your thoughts?
I guess I don't have any strong feelings about that one way or the other. I would probably look to Bryce as well as to Miguel as to what they think might be our highest priority items in doing this kind of work. You know, one of the things that concerns me a little bit is if Bryce is going to be moving out of the assessor's office, because I don't know that we can expect the assessor to maintain a space for Bryce, where will he go and what equipment will he need?
Bryce, what do you, we didn't have a chance to talk about that this morning. What what do you have there?
Yeah, so I've been thinking a lot about that. The first place that came off or came to mind when I was thinking about a place would be Meets IT Room. I'm not sure, and I know it's a full room down there and it's full of mainly just equipment and stuff. I wouldn't need much more than just a desk and, you know, one thing I'd like to push for is working remotely, at least a part of the time because I have a full office here. I've been using my personal laptop for all this GIS stuff that I've been doing to this point. I have a nice dual monitor setup here and just feel like I've gotten, over the course of having to work from home, I've actually learned to like it and be productive doing it. So I think that is a huge part of it. And then I really just think there needs to be some sort of landing spot for me. And I think that IT room, if it's open, I don't know if that's a possibility, but that's somewhere I've been looking at.
I also wonder if, you know, the treasurer's office has some space, has a desk space as well, but if it makes more sense to be co-located with land use by the nature of the work that you would be doing, Bryce. I certainly understand that. I also am curious, is this, is this, has everybody agreed that this would be, you know, a full-time position, that there's enough work to do, that are we worried about keeping Bryce busy? I mean, I think that there's plenty to do that I can think of off the top of my head initially. Just want to make sure that you know, we're kind of talking through all that and meeting expectations and that Bryce wants to, wants to be, wants to do this and make this transition. Go ahead, Paul, it looks like, oh.
I would love to have Bryce located with the nearby land use. I also think that remote working, this would actually be a pretty good example of a remote working job. So he doesn't actually need to have a space at the county. And I can almost absolutely guarantee that there's enough work for two people, maybe three.
In mapping?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that, Paul?
Well, keep in mind, and I've discussed this before, but we're talking about more than making maps. We're talking about administering data that's associated with the map. Now, I think one of the items that you talked about as being a high priority item is county roads. And it's one thing to map the county road. It's another thing to associate the data, county road. Data such as what's the condition of that road? What is the surface of that road? What is the width of that road? Which changes from mile to mile to mile? Are there guardrails? Is there any kind of a future schedule for resurfacing or anything like that? That's a major project right there all by itself. I think some of the other issues associated with that are the legal standings of those various roads. I know many of them are simply roads that have just been acquired over the years and the county has taken over that simply have never been declared to be an actual county road. And I think that when I'm speaking about this, I think this is a position that works well with both the city and the county. That it isn't the kind of a position that is just focused on county issues. I think that the road status, I think, is something that the city would be very interested in knowing too. How far, we've heard from Greg, I think, last week that the some of the mapping of the roads and the actual placement of them are two different things. And we probably need to know more about what that means and how that is. The thing that's going to happen to us, and I'm sure Bryce is probably as well aware of this as anybody is, is the fact that we're going to, as Bryce starts to dig into this, he's going to have to avoid going down various rabbit holes that are going to crop up. And he's probably going to need help in deciding whether that's a rabbit hole or whether that needs to be addressed or not. So Bryce is going to be very busy all by himself. Is the main point I want to make.
Yeah, I think, yeah, as you were talking, I could think of the, you know, community wildfire protection plan as well. And some of that work in helping identify private and public lands and to incorporate and be sure that we have a, you know, adequate list to do that proper outreach and get approval on some of some proposed projects like that. Yeah, I mean, I don't doubt that Bryce could be busy for a while.
Bryce is going to, in a year, if we get here, Bryce is going to start asking for help, is my guess. And I want to emphasize the fact that mapping is probably one tenth of what Bryce is going to be doing. Making pictures is one tenth of what GIS is all about.
How does this translate into data for law enforcement and fire and that kind of thing, Bryce? Would you would you be able to do those updates for like our 911 system and that kind of thing or what does that look like?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things I've definitely been looking at doing is helping out with the emergency services. And just having a, I think, just having a single clearinghouse is really going to help with that, you know, one source that you can go to that you can correct if you need to. You know, I'm not sure what the particulars of their system is as far as emergency response, but I know it has a lot to do with data and it has a lot to do with mapping and so I could definitely help with that. And that's one of the main areas I wanted to help out with. And I think Paul brings up a great point about, I feel like mapping is the easy surface level thing to see about this job and it's really going to be more of a data management position and data processing and analysis. I think that's going to be really powerful. You know, the maps is going to be great because visualizing all these things is one part of that. But just having the data in itself is going to be wonderful. And just, yeah, what you mentioned about the roads, Paul, it's really interesting because we do have an inventory with all the kind of parameters you were talking about, but it hasn't been updated since 2017. So we have a good starting point, you know, as far as that goes.
In some counties, Janine says in the chat, in some counties like Pueblo, they have done economic mapping which outlines areas of need. I know that in Summit County, when they had the Buffalo Peaks fire, they were able to establish the valuation of the area that had burned and keep that fairly updated and current. So I think it's really cool. What's your feel on that, fellow commissioners?
I think it's great. I mean, I've worked with Bryce briefly on a couple of small inquiries and I think it's important to have somebody local, somebody creative, somebody who can see big picture, long-term kind of strategy on why and how we could or even how we don't even know, you know, what information might be gleaned from compiling certain data points. And I experienced that with Bryce. So I am glad to have somebody in-house to do this work who understands our community because like Janine saying, you know, there's many other ways to use ESRI and GIS or GPS and pulling kind of socioeconomic information rather than even just physical geography mapping, if you will, probably not stating that quite right, but I think this would be great. I do. I'm wondering, did we, we talked a little bit about pulling, just pulling some of the costs that were associated with those third-party mapping entities that we have currently been contracting with. I think somebody threw out about $17,000 or whatnot. But again, just like to understand for moving further in the process of towards implementing this, you know, be able to communicate that with folks and the value that we'd be shifting and putting towards an in-house person.
Yeah, Sarah, that's a tough subject, isn't it? Budgeting is always hard, but I think we're going to be looking at an extremely challenging budgeting session. And I know Miguel has been talking about this for years and the need for it for years. And I've been in support of what Miguel's been saying, but I don't think that I have voiced it as well as I probably should have. This is probably not the time to be going here, even though I don't have a handle on the budget picture.
Yeah, I mean, I, sorry, I appreciate you saying that, Paul, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in any way trying to challenge it because I'm trying to articulate that, that, you know, part of the assistance in coming up with creative plans and strategic plans is being able to have somebody who's intimately, has an intimate understanding of our community. And these images alone, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words, really help start some of those conversations that we try to have around, you know, what else to do or addressing an issue that comes up. So I mean, I think there's value beyond what we could, we could really quantify right now.
Well said. That is, that's what's going to happen, that as we proceed to have one person focusing on Lake County GIS information, there are going to be, that person is going to develop a need for help in prioritizing issues that come up. And there's going to be all the rest of us that are going to say, hey, Bryce, I need a map of blah, blah, blah. And he's going to get redirected to doing that and he's going to ask us questions about what it is that he needs and what what we need and what we needed for. This is a move that our surrounding, like Eagle and have had in place for the last 20 years and more. So we have a lot of catch-up to do, but it also helps us because we won't be doing a lot of inventing, of reinventing of the wheel.
Yeah, I think I think starting to make the move after August, after we get through the protest period, isn't too far-fetched of an idea, really. Do you know, Bryce, if we've done the flight for pictometry yet?
As far as I know, that's planned for October, once the leaves have fallen off, so we get kind of maximum coverage.
Okay. So it would really be, it would really be kind of like perfect timing, right?
Yeah, I think so. And then the other thing I was thinking of that's going to be huge for us, I know Janine mentioned the socioeconomic data, is that we're going to have a ton of new census 2020 data coming out at the end of this year. And that's, that's going to be huge as far as just having more tools to work with. So, yeah, I think this fall is going to be a really opportune time because of all the new things we're having come in, you know, and to have someone dedicated to it. And that 17,000 quantity, I was able to quantify that. That's just what we were paying third party just in the assessor's office last year. So it's a good start, you know, because we're not paying that this year already, so. So it's a good start, you know, because we're not paying that this year already, so.
I don't have any other questions right now. Do you have any other questions, Sarah or Mark? No? So I think Bryce, I will continue to work with you and Paul and Miguel on working out some more of these logistics. And then we can bring it to the board as we get closer to to the end of August, if that's cool.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Bryce, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with it. I'm really thrilled about this potentiality here.
Yeah. I think it'll be really cool. I think it'll be a cool tool for all of us, city, county, emergency services. I think it'll be really great. Plus, it's, uh, it's gonna be critical for us to have all of that accurate information for us to to really be creative about our budget, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure people, yeah, really understand how how this could would support kind of our better establishing of of operations and structure in that idea of resiliency and trying to be self-sufficient. And again, you know, just having experienced over the last five years of of planning and land use alone, never mind all the other, you know, those socioeconomic pieces potentially. This, this would be very nice to have at our disposal.
Yeah, definitely. Cool, so I think, um, we're good on the mapping topic for today. We'll work on getting through some of the logistics. I'll set up a meeting with Bryce and Paul and Miguel, maybe within the next week or so, and then we can, we can go through that if that works with you guys. Sound good?
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you so much. You guys are the best.
Well, we're pretty good.
So let's, uh, let's move into city county maintenance collaboration conversation. Greg, Mayor Lave had asked for us to have a conversation about this at our work session, and so here we are. So if you wanna kick us off with your idea, that'll work.
Yeah, my idea is simplistic right now. It's probably a lot more complicated, I think it is, but that's the way it's almost always is. I know that Roger has decided to retire. And I think that that may usher the opportunity for us to to do some things that we've been, you know, hoping for in terms of collaboration or even combining some of our departments. So with this case, you know, the the county maintenance department is a lot of things that that our street department does not do in terms of of maintenance and parks and and things like that. We're not very good at it. So what I was thinking is we have a a seventh crew person right now that we would, and that that's an unfilled vacancy right this second. So what we could do in terms of an MOU is we could take that amount of money, which fully loaded would be $44,179, and put it into the MOU. And that would allow the the county maintenance department to add at least a person because we we fund that at a starting wage of $18 an hour. And we also have two side by sides in our street department that we, we just don't use both of them. And and so, you know, turning one of those over to county maintenance for that person to use might make a lot of sense. And so that's just, that's a really rough out of, and then we would want to define our expectation for then what county maintenance supplies, you know, that would take things off the plate of the city. One example might be trash on Harrison Avenue. Another example might be Zeit's Park. Another might be changing light bulbs at the city in the city in City Hall. So right now, this is a real rough out. But I wanted to get this conversation started because I think if we're gonna do it, we should do it soon.
Well, Mayor, this is perfect timing. And, you know, yesterday, most all of the morning, I had met with the rec department and public works and maintenance, and the custodian staff is under maintenance. So currently in the interim, the the plan to operate with the maintenance department is for the custodian staff to be managed under Amber McGee and the rec department. And the maintenance crew will be then supervised by Michael Irwin through Public Works. I think that this is a great opportunity. I love the proposal. We don't yet have all the answers of kind of what this long-term structure might look like. But I think that to include you in those conversations that are happening, you know, just starting yesterday, including including the maintenance crew, you know, there's only been a couple of days since Roger has taken his leave. I think it's it's good timing. I think we should pursue it. And we'll include the right folks in those conversations as we continue them. I know that there is some, you know, we could keep it as simple as dedicating those funds and then, of course, agreeing on what, you know, what the county then covers as far as responsibilities of city property or needs. And, you know, we can also inform you, we're trying to get a maintenance crew to get on Pub Works and a better system of, you know, groundskeeping versus or incorporated with response to program needs as far as, you know, recreation goes. So just trying to get a better system, improved system up and running. I see Sarah Dallas has her hand up here.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah. I wanted to add to what the mayor has said, that also, I think in the past, council has talked about looking at our contribution of the Colorado Trust Funds, the CTF Funds, because that does provide some maintenance capabilities that we utilize. I think we're roughly around 25,000 to 27,000 annually that we receive that that fills in. And as the mayor mentioned, the Zeit's Park, but also at some point when it was former Mayor Stever, the city got kind of that Elm Street track of land. And I know that there's been issues in the past and we tried to water and maintain it. So that's something to consider. I think there was some will at council and maybe even as we go into budget conversations in terms of maybe an allocation or all of that CTF funds and then being really utilized with the rec department board and determining what's the best use of those funds. Just also identifying that the city would want to ensure that some of our assets, like the Tabor Opera House and our little park downtown, you know, would make it on those lists. But certainly, I think we want to be collaborative with the county and use these opportunities to really streamline things, which then folds in, and I have, you see that Beth Helmke and Amber are both on the call. You know, the work that we've done with Winter Mission and identifying some of those critical pathways to clear maintenance snow for walkability has continued to be flagged and raised. But we haven't really figured out who and how that would happen. And so I see this as an opportunity for that as well, to have outdoor spaces that are the Lake County Park access or the cities to provide that access with this. In addition, I think the broader conversation, if we can baby step here, we might really show goodwill and opportunity to collaborate in other departments. And I think really making sure our CDL drivers are being paid and can do the work that is demanded of them from CDL and not be diluted with all these maintenance things, you know, our street department are a catchall for everything that we kind of need to do. And it takes away from maybe their skilled assets and what they should be focused on. So however we can help in that process and conversation, I think the mayor and I and council are committed to working through that with you.
Thank you, Sarah.
You've taken the first step that, you know, we've been talking about this, about the possibility of of a combination of road and bridge, city streets and county maintenance, all kind of into a more of a, you know, an all encompassing organization. And if you've already put county maintenance under Michael Irwin, it seems like you've taken a big step in that direction. And then the next step, you know, maybe in 2021, might be folding in and and doing an IGA, not unlike the fire department, in terms of city street department and county road and bridge and the maintenance department, all as one organization.
Seems to make a lot of sense. And I do just want to mention, I apologize that Michael Irwin or or any other public works folks are not here. They're in a a training right now, so poor conflict of timing. But again, we should include you in this conversation. And if you want to organize a a meeting to figure out, you know, what we do right now in the interim, how, yeah, what, I guess, what is, what is the sense of your timing here? Since we are in an interim phase at the county with the maintenance department and trying to figure out a structure here. Do y'all hope to get support through this summer? I mean, I think we can entertain that and talk about that.
So we do have some additional things that I didn't mention yet, or the mayor. So, you know, the flower boxes go on the avenue next week, June 11. They'll be reduced. Usually there's 50, this year there will be 40. Typically, we pay that out as kind of a sub contract kind of work. It's not really subcontract work, it's just like a seasonal work. Harry Temple's been doing that. He's currently unavailable, at least for the start and foreseeable future. So that will need some, we we were planning to require maybe one of the street department or look for some other volunteer to do that work. It's watering like two to three times a week with that side by side that the mayor mentioned. Certainly, the maintenance of the little parks, Zeit's Park and Elm Street, we'd be willing to talk about. So I I mean, I don't know that we want to be forceful of any timeline, but certainly there could be opportunities for this summer if there was the will for this. But I don't know that we could detail everything into an MOU or IGA that quickly. But maybe we could be creative and and try some projects, if you will, to get us through. That's just some suggestions and thoughts off the top of my head.
Sure. And I think we will be looking to hire, to hire actually to backfill, you know, with Roger being on leave, and we do have another staff person on leave in that department. So we do, we do need to look at hiring sooner than later regardless. So perhaps, yeah, perhaps we could, let's have those conversations and figure out what that looks like to move forward as swiftly as we can.
And to Sarah's point, you know, financially, as we look at this, you know, we have, we have one vacancy. So that's, that's easy money. And we have some CTF funds. And we could look at what kind of of jobs are being taken off of our street department in terms of of additional funding. In other words, I think we could come to a point where where it could fund two people for the maintenance department, not just one. And that might be a huge difference in terms of making it all work really well for for both the city and county.
So can I, I just want to make sure that I I understand correctly, because it sounds like really then we would just be having one maintenance department between the two entities that would be responsible for all of the parks and facilities maintenance. Would that be a correct assumption?
Yes, that sounds, sounds right.
Okay. I I think that that sounds efficient.
And it could be a win-win for both organizations. It feels that way on on the surface.
Right, and I would say the the quick math is those salary ranges. But the additional cost savings, as we know, and we have theorized, is cost savings in insurance and in bulk purchasing of supplies and running of efficiencies. So all of those things will have to fold in and contemplate, but they are real dollars for sure.
So what do we need to get started with this then? Just draft an MOU? What does that? What does that look like? What's the next step?
I think a lot depends on how how you feel about this transition and whether you feel like, you know, throwing this into the mix is more problematic than you're willing to deal with. I I was hoping that that, you know, this transition was an ideal time, you know. But I I don't know, and that really kind of has to be your call in terms of, should we be doing this in the middle of a transition? My opinion is yes, but then I don't have to do it.
I I always, I think the next step, we need to, you know, sit down with whoever is or a couple of people most appropriate from the city, Amber McGee, Michael Irwin, and talk about, you know, what, just take an inventory of what we are talking about as far as potentially potential city facilities and and responsibilities. And then we can probably sit down and talk about, you know, how we can, I mean, again, we need that staffing backfill sooner than later. So I think if we could, you know, organize a conversation pretty soon here, that would be great. Tomorrow morning, I have a public works check in early, and we can do that, or we can schedule something else. You know, I can just pull Michael and Amber together and we can throw out some dates to you guys.
That would be great. I I am gonna be out next week. Ms. Dallas may be available for that conversation, Sarah. What do you think?
Yeah, I am booked tomorrow with the Tabor Opera House and the construction check in meetings in the morning, but I could be available in the afternoon. And certainly I could be available next week anytime that we need to schedule.
Okay. Okay. I will also be out next week, but let's get all the players together. And I'm sure Amber and Michael, once he's out of this training, throughout the afternoon, we can get some, something scheduled in the the next couple of days.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the Yeah, I appreciate the the thought and the proposal.
Patrick asked a question in the in the chat.
What's that? Patrick says, so the salary of the person you would be giving to the county is paid by the mill city folk are paying for with their property taxes. So that person should only be working on city projects, question mark?
Because as we know, everybody in the city is is a county resident. So it would be a combination. Not not quite sure. That's interesting, interesting question.
I think, I think that that's, I think that that's all part of just combining efforts and having the conversations to provide services more efficiently and jointly as city and county.
We we do that with the animal shelter, we do with the fire department.
Right.
Just, just the next step in that, in that evolution for for both of us.
Awesome. Oh, and the building department.
Oh, yeah, yeah, forgot, Paul.
Cool, I I think it's great. I think it sounds really efficient. I think it sounds beneficial to all of us. So, yeah, I think when we can get working on that and then bring that forward, the sooner the better will work. I I have a tendency to agree with Greg, that I think we're, even though we're in kind of a transitional phase here, it's really the best time for us to make some of those organizational changes collaboratively with with the city so that we can work more efficiently, definitely, to save money for both of us.
One other thing I'll just mention, one thing we didn't factor, we've had a really difficult time keeping someone staff for custodial purposes. And so in in years, we've gone to contracting out that kind of transition. And we have currently a contract with someone for deeper environmental cleaning. But that would be something we could potentially also discuss. I think the, do the challenges, those public restrooms right on Main Street, those are utilized pretty heavily in the summer months and trying to keep those clean. And then all of our city hall kind of cleaning and maintenance, I think we're around three days a week right now that they're coming in and providing us cleaning. And then we're individually, you know, doing the safer personal cleaning of spaces. But that could also be something to consider when we're talking about this.
I I'd like to also suggest that perhaps a conversation with a couple of the our our maintenance staff today be actually had, because I know those guys are, they're busy all the time. And I know in particular, in the winter time, they get worked pretty hard. So. So I, I think it might be a good idea to have a conversation with a couple of them just to, to see if they can help you identify any potential issues that might crop up.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's well put, Paul. And, and I, I don't think this, this MOU would, would add any burden to them if we're adding people to their, to their crew. It might have the opposite effect, so that, that would be my hope.
Yeah, and again, Paul, to your point, working with the Pub Works software and getting kind of a better ticketing system out for managing requests of the maintenance department is something that will work with Michael Irwin, and, and the maintenance crew has started to get trained on that. And so working directly with Michael will be a benefit to kind of implementing and exercising that even better and, and creating, you know, hopefully better and more efficient scheduling. But definitely they are, you know, we, we sat down with, with a, a couple of the maintenance crew guys yesterday, and, and they'll absolutely be a part of the conversation.
Does anybody else have anything to add to, to this right now? Commissioner Glenn, what are your thoughts?
I really don't have any comments right now.
Okay. So Sarah, it sounds like Sarah Much, Sarah Dallas, Greg, Michael Irwin and Amber will probably meet within the next week or so to start developing what that plan would look like. And then do we have a potential execution date for, for this, when we would like to start it? I would imagine that you'd like to start utilizing this structure within the summertime, correct, Greg?
Well, that would be my hope, but I, I also don't want to push it. As, as Commissioner Much said, I think we need to be thoughtful about this and a little bit careful. I always tend to rush things, as Ms. Dallas would, would tell you. But I'd like, really like for us to do this gently in terms of our personnel and, and organizations. Because in, at least in my mind, this is like the first step getting us ready for 2021 and what changes we may want to make then.
I'll send out the email to help organize that, that follow-up conversation. And, and hopefully we'll get something on the books on a regular basis.
Yeah, so, you know, I really didn't, I really kind of avoided Kayla's question. But, but the answer is, if we could put it together in the next couple of weeks, I think that'd be great. If we could do it by tomorrow, it'd be even better. But maybe July 1st would be, would be a good target to, to implement.
I don't think that July 1st is that far off base, really. I think it would be somewhat simple, really, for us to at least lay the groundwork.
Yeah, and of course, the catch is getting, getting people hired. That's a, it could be a little bit of a challenge. Because in that case, you would have to hire at least two people to backfill Roger and to add the new person to your crew. And if we can find the funding, maybe, maybe adding two people to your crew. But, you know, getting people who want to do that work is not always easy.
Commissioner Glenn, Commissioner Much, do you have any further discussion on this topic?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all I've had, I had on my agenda for today, for us to discuss and talk about. And it sounds like we have kind of some follow-up for, for us to do from this conversation. And then I would imagine, Sarah Much, that you would bring that back to the board after you've kind of worked through some of those changes.
Yeah, I think most realistically, in a couple of weeks, we can bring you back an update and probably move with potentially weekly updates from there. And, yeah.
I think that'll work. Greg and Sarah, do you feel like we, we tackled what we needed to to at least get this started and off the ground at this point?
Oh, absolutely. I think you guys have been great. Thank you.
This is exciting. Thank you for being willing to think through this. And I think we've had lots of conversations, and now we're really starting to see where this could go. And I think that's exciting. Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome. Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything further?
I do not.
All right. So I think with that, then, I feel like we're in a pretty good place. And I feel like we can probably adjourn for today if everybody's good. Does anybody have anything further that they'd like to discuss or talk about at this point?
Several hundred things, but we better go.
I guess I would just, is being 157 in the EOC call, I believe we are, this will be the last weekly EOC call that we will have here at 2:00. And just reminding everybody to, to keep promoting and pushing out the development of the recovery teams. And if, if there are any folks who want to be a part of that, to continue to reach out to Commissioner Marcella and Janine and Chad Most with the Main Street Program.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Town halls tonight at 5:00. Sanitation is at 6:00. Thanks.
Yes.
Bye.